Evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, December 7th at approximately 7:08 PM. And we are in regular session tonight, reading a series of ordinances. And then we will have executive session following the readings of these ordinances. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum. We have all members of council present here tonight. Our next item of business is disposition of minutes. And these are for city council sessions held on November 2nd, 9th, and 23rd. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to accept.
Okay, a second?
Second.
A minute somewhere there. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the minutes have been approved. We now have our communications. My city council has received several. One from the Department of Commerce. And this is a notice to legislative authorities that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in our political subdivision will expire on February 1st, 2016. And so in order to maintain permit privileges, the permit holder must file a renewal application. And so we've been notified of this. And if we want to take any action on this, then we would need to work with our city law director about that. So we have been notified. The other communication that we've received from the Division of Liquor Control is that the C&amp;E market on Richland Avenue has applied for a C1 and C2 permit. And the C1 allows beer only in original sealed containers for carryout only. The C2 allows wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers for carryout. So we have received notice of that. And if we would, if the city would want to make any responses to that, they must be postmarked no later than December 28th. Are there other communications from other council members? Communications from other elected officials from the mayor?
The only thing I have is that our office, the city office, will be closed this Friday, December 11th, probably from 11 o'clock or 11:30 onward for our employee recognition luncheon. We have this yearly and you're welcome to come. It's always, you know, a chance to appreciate how our employees up and down the scale there.
Good opportunity.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Unless there's something else I missed.
The parking garage may be closed next week. We're having our project meeting tomorrow and we'll have that determined. We'll do as best outreach as possible to make sure that we have a signage in place and let everyone know.
Okay.
I believe they tried to the ramps.
Is there a question, Councilmember Canterbury?
Yeah, what percentage are we with the parking garage?
Oh, we're probably close to 50% because the elevators are an entire different component. And that won't be done until next year, next spring. Let's get the students out of here and we'll move back in.
As well as the ceiling has to be done. Although, right now they're doing the verticals, it looks like. You can see where they're chipping away and patching.
And we talked about it at committee meeting, but there will, more than likely, there will be a project overrun. So we'll be bringing that forward next year as well.
Any communications or reports from the law director?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on with our ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 11115 is an ordinance authorizing a contract extension of the city's third-party administrator for medical insurance and prescription coverage and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
I think you, Madam President, I move to adopt 11115.
Second.
This is, the discussing committee has been read twice. Essentially, the Service Safety Director is authorized to extend the contract with a third-party administrator, which is their UMR, for the period of January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016. Then the ordinance goes on to specify the various things that has to be done. I have nothing new to add to it unless something's changed since then. Administration needs to talk to it and speak to it.
We're good.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 11115. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11215, an ordinance establishing the maximum age limitation for an original appointment to the Athens City Police Department. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
I thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 111215.
Second.
This ordinance is just one of these things that is a no-brainer. It's, we have many, many qualified people out there who can be working in the field of law enforcement and we should tap into that reservoir of talent and experience. We're moving the age up to the age of 40 as maximum age limit. I see no reason not to adopt this. So, especially speaking from my age level, so let's just do it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance increasing the age of police department appointments from 35 to 40. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11315 is an ordinance authorizing an extension of the current franchise agreement with the Ohio Power Company for use of the city right-of-way as authorized by ordinance 14313 and extended by ordinance 12614 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt.
Second.
Thank you. We've talked about this numerous times. I would like to point out that it used to be city would authorize this for 25 years. And now we're doing it on a yearly basis because that way we have more negotiating power with AEP if we don't like what they're doing, especially to our trees.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 11315. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11515 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 11, Business and Regulations, Chapter 11.10, Contractor Registration and Declaring an Emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 113, 115.
Second.
Thank you. This goes along with our monumental overhaul of the tax code that we have been doing in the past few meetings. And this is doing housekeeping basically with our code so that we can catch up with what is required.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 11515. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 116, we're now moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 11615 is an ordinance authorizing the adoption of a three-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2403, and Ohio Council 8, AFL-CIO, concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ordinance is for first reading now. Ordinance 11915 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state agreement for a bridge deck overlay projection on Athens State Route 682 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Taffey.
Thank you. This is the second part of the ordinance for the Work by the State ODOT. And they just have to have an agreement from Athens City Council that we are in agreement with the route.
Ordinance 12015 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016. Councilman, this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the budget that we've been waiting on all this time that first started talking about in October. Those of you who have not seen it, I think it's all on our disk drive, disk drive now. Essentially, as you've already read, be agreed by the City of Athens that to provide the current expenditures, the said city of Athens during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016, the following sums be and are hereby set aside and appropriate as follows. Section 2 then goes through the list here of the various departments and funds that it will go through. Having glanced through this, at the very end are grand totals of expenditures, which the budget total would be $38,105,059. I believe that's up by about, what, $700,000 from last year?
I forget, actually. I don't have a copy of the last year's here.
Uh huh.
But it has gone up, yes.
Right.
The general fund, of course, is about $14.6 million.
Mm-hmm.
We probably put a little bit of padding in there just for the differences in these things that need to be dealt with in terms of increased insurance as well as possible raises.
Mm-hmm.
Also additional overtime for the changeover of personnel. Again, if you look at the general fund, pretty much, it's pretty much, there's some pieces that have dollar amounts for the capital outlay. I've saved most of that for the 580 funds further down into the capital improvement fund.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, other things about it, if you notice about, you look at the, the way the layout is, of course, this gives you a percentage of by transaction class as well as department. If so, if you were to view the general fund, you'd see that the police take up about 27% to almost 28% of the general fund.
You say that was police?
Police.
Police.
And fire is about 24%. Further down, of course, there are other departments. Let's see, Land and Buildings, about 7. We have a new fund, of course, Cemetery, which is just in its infancy. We'll see how well that progresses. Again, I spent some time putting this together. What you see here is a spreadsheet. There is a monstrous spreadsheet, about four megabytes of all the tabs and all the calculations and errors that I've progressed through.
I think I have three copies of it now, so, yeah.
I have, I have at least 15 copies of it because I keep adding. I can only work on it so long before my, my numbers turn, go backwards and I start making grievous mistakes. I stop, I put a date on it, and then I start over the next time. Part of the thing here, of course, is that the amounts of money that we spend have gone up over time. The breakdown, if you remember, about 74, 73% goes to general fund or income tax. My share goes to our streets and recreation at that point. I would actually like to pitch for a increase, to put on a ballot next year, a 0.1% income tax for the general fund.
For general fund?
Yes. We, in the past, we, in the past few years, and this, and this is why, what I find each time we try carving up the pie, the capital fund gets, needs more. I think you hear that nationwide, the need for improved infrastructure. And in the past, we've actually devoted a 0.1%, which is in place right now for the streets. And in the past, we've overlapped that with one month, with one year. Usually, right now, our income tax is 1.65. And again, the 10-year for the streets is there, the 20-year for the, 0.1 for the pool is there. And these are very specific. But if you start looking, what I'm hearing, in my, in my process here, I ask what the departments want. And many of them, not so much need of materials, but actually what they need is staffing. I've been approached, I know the discussion on council has been in pass about another, a second lid of control officer. That is actually probably doable. You know, if you look at further staff ordinance later on, you'll see we've put two in there. Mostly because our garbage fund is fairly, sanitation fund is fairly robust. And that's because we've been watching it with the idea that there'd be changes with the solid waste district going on. On the other hand, I've got, you know, the fire department, if you've read the reports, they would like some more staff. Police would like the same thing. Code would like an extra staffer. In fact, they would like to see, you know, they, they take around the idea of a building department versus code enforcement. Also, the idea that it should be, maybe we should morph it into a 24-hour activity. And I hesitate to do that because that's even more expensive.
Yeah.
But the fact is, many people know when to violate the code because there's nobody there. I've had extra staffing from government channel as well. So the pitch is, for me, is to, is to put on a ballot for next year, a 0.1. That would give us about $690,000, which would be able, we could, we could do some of the things we'd like to do. And I say that because there's, there's a need for more, more sports activity. We've increased our footprint of our parks. We've increased the, let's see, if you, if you glance back at the data for the school enrollment, OUU's enrollment, the last time when we were at point, when we started, the 0.16, that was in 79, 97, sorry. At that point, there were 19,000 students there according to OUU's data. They are closer to, I think about 23 right now, 23,000. So our need for service has gone up. These are not high-income wage earners. In fact, I was looking at one of the reports from the board trustees. They said, their statement, of course, is that since 2010 to 2014, the undergraduate has increased by 12.3%. The government funds have gone down since 2005, when we were getting $812,000. We're now down to $383,000 in the local government funds. We don't know what the next, and, and, you know, again, it's, we, we talk about wanting to rebuild a fire department, a fire station, you know? The one we have, we've been patching up for a while. We talk about trying to improve some of our, our parks. We've put some of that money aside for that. I'm a little bit leery when, when the director of Arts Parks and Recreation says we need more staff because our footprint for all those activities has increased too. So I would say, it's a plea to say, look at it, look at it at this point. If you start comparing other cities, they're all over the place. I don't know how you'd go with comparables at this point. Keds at 2.25, Oxford's at 2, Athens, of course, is 1.65. Well, 1.65, Wendy's is 2.25, yeah. Chila Cote's at 1.6, Marriott is 1.7. Trying to look around for other comparables is very difficult, of course. But I think it's something you should think about. And, and again, I look at the general fund as the catch-all. We can always move stuff out of the general fund depending on needs out there. We've acquired a new department entirely, Cemeteries, which is, is not a robust moneymaker.
No, robust wouldn't be the definition.
I know. But that's it. We've doubled, we've almost tripled our footprint for that as well as, so you start looking at arts parks, our services that have increased over time with increased population.
Okay. Madam President?
Transit, transit too, yes.
I just wanted to thank the mayor and all the department, the administration's departments for working on the budget. I know it's a lot of work putting that together and reviewing it. And the finance committee here on council has put in a lot of hours on it. And just point out, too, that you make a very cogent argument for considering a slight income tax based on what other cities, you know, our size are doing, but also the number of people in our city that we're taking care of. If you look at our general fund, 75% of our budget in the general fund is personnel. And it's a, there's not a lot of room. It's a very tight budget and it's to very basic services that we're providing and very essential services for our city.
And again, the other thing you want to look at is, in terms of 012015, will be modified every time you do an appropriation. You have an appropriation on the listing right now for later this evening. That's actually, you know, will reference the previous one from last year. So it's a, it's a dollar amount depending on what the carryover looks like, what the needs are as they progress. You know, it could all be washed away with a hundred-year flood too. So there's always, you have to have contingencies and think about the possible contingencies.
Member Fall?
I appreciate all the research that's gone into this. I would like to, when we continue this negotiation and discussion, I would like to know the fact, when exactly and how much the income tax has been raised in the past 15 years. Probably not much. Also, I would like to reemphasize the fact that the amount of money that's coming from Columbus is reduced. It's been reduced for numerous years. It was reduced during the recession when we were hit the hardest. And what's going on is that because of Columbus and the powers that be up there, what they're doing is, is putting more and more pressure onto the local tax base. And in certain situations, the local tax base may be very vibrant and diversified, which is something, but we have a lot of state-based employment and they're not a tax-based entity. And so we've been hit doubly hard because they've taken away a lot of the local governments and they've also taken away the amount of money that they're given, that various communities are given for having large state enterprises. And I would like at some point to know whether, and Chila Coffee, whether the reduction for having the numerous prison population there has reduced their state base as much as the universities have it. And I bet they haven't. So that's just, so that needs to be reemphasized every time we talk about this. And it's not just because Athens is like, wants bigger and wider streets. It's because we have been hit time and time again from Columbus.
Just to stay on track, again, this is, this budget will be modified depending on certified resources. Again, this is an estimate what we expect to bring in next year as well as what the carryover will look like. We can guess at that, but it, until the numbers all crunched, we don't know. I do have a filed of some of the tax, income tax timelines that are there as well as where it picked up and started. I did that a couple of years ago, so I can get it, I'll pass it to you if you wish it. Any questions about it?
Member Patterson?
Just going back to this possible tax increase, you know, something else too that to be cognizant of is, and I'd kind of like to see what has been the city's growth too in terms of annexation. I mean, the city's footprint is getting larger smartly with economic development and whatnot. It's not just willy-nilly expansion. It's thoughtful expansion. But that comes with increase in extraneous city resources as well.
I was saying, yeah, Member Canterbury?
I just want to kind of touch on a few things. Council President talked about 74% of monies go to wages, which it's true. It's, you're a public entity there. That will always happen. It's a public entity. Number two, when you talk about raising the income tax, one of the things you want to look at is that water and sewer is going to increase 5% for the year, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, that's another 5% that's actually going on to the residents. And now you're talking about another, raising the income tax, that's another percentage that's going on to them that works here. So we got to be careful, you know, when we're looking at, you know, trying to put too much on burden upon the people. We talked about, the mayor talked about code enforcement. I thought our legislation that we just passed was to increase the monies paid from the contracted residents, or not the residents, but the permits and things that they would apply for, that we could hire one. I thought that was what that was for. So just touching on a few of those.
I think the contractor one was actually to eliminate the language for the 12 days or more because right now, according to state, it has to be 20 days or more.
But we increased the fees.
I believe Councilman Canterbury is speaking to the increased trash fine, litter fines?
It may have been. It was one of them that we had.
I don't think we've increased.
I think Councilman Patterson brought that up and that was what we brought about.
Quite a while ago.
Talking about hiring an additional code enforcement.
Quite a while ago.
Quite a while ago, sure, sure. Yeah. But that's, you know, when you talk about somebody's salary, it'll never come to that point. I mean, that, that would have to be some hefty increases.
We talked about that.
And we're bound by Ohio revised code too in terms of maximum.
And as for the water, it is one proprietary, two is that the next project is to do upgrades of a water treatment plant. I forget which portion of it was, the wet side or the pumping side. Again, it's a dialogue we've had with the anti-stony engineer. Once the wastewater treatment plant gets done, the next one is to upgrade our water as needed. And I'm not sure what portions they are. I know there's been discussions of that, but I.
Maybe it's still an increase.
Yes, it is. Well, it costs money to build these things and maintain these things. Civilization doesn't run on its own. And you know that as well as I.
But also look for the constituents' pocket too, to make sure things are easier on man.
Yes. Well, that's where you take it to the voters. That's the whole point of putting on a ballot, okay? We'll find out.
Well, thank you for the, thank you for the comments. We'll move on to ordinance 12115. This is an ordinance authorizing staffing levels, non-union pay scale and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me read you Sections 1 and 2 of the ordinance. Effective first pay period 2016, staffing levels and non-union pay ranges and slotting attached heretofore and incorporated herein and by reference shall be in effect and all ordinance inconsistent therewith shall be repealed. Section 2, Athens City Council does hereby authorize a 2% pay increase for calendar year 2016 for all non-union employees included in 2016 slot. So this is being read for the first time. I don't think there's any urgency about suspending the rules on this, so there you have it.
Ordinance 12215 is an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel for the City of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee also.
Thank you, Madam President. Trying to get it up here. Finally, I found it in my package. This particular document I have seen floating back and forth between one administrator and another in the city in various meetings in draft form. And we discussed it last week in committee. And I believe now it's ready to go, I hope. Because we certainly need to get this thing put through. So the Section 1, January 1st, 2016, French benefit package attached heretofore and incorporated herein shall be in effect. And I believe, looking through all this, trying to find the most pertinent thing that Apparently my post-it note is not on the right page. The administration could just talk to it.
No, a lot of it was what we deemed cleanup language and to reflect what is current practice. So when you look through it, you'll see the bolded sections are, changes, some crossouts and what have you, some specific positions identified at the request of the auditor's office so that it's clear what benefits there they have. Cleanup language on compensatory time, inclusion of your recent ordinance regarding vacations included will schedule and take at least one consecutive week. If someone is separated and returns to the city, how they get back in there. Continuing domestic partner coverage for next year. Again, identifying part-time, permanent versus interim, temporary. Not seeing much here. Again, just some real cleanup language in different places, identifying the use of an employee's birthday. I will say that was suggested this morning, too late, at staff, just to call it a floating holiday because it really isn't assigned to your date of birth anymore. But that can always be changed later. A little change in probationary periods, back to, can give up to 5% for a promotion increase after successful completion of the.
As well as the posting internally and externally about the job.
To be able to do that simultaneously to speed up hiring. And then. To be able to do that simultaneously to speed up hiring, and then clarification on the state of emergency.
Yeah, could you come do about the state of emergency?
Yes, I, we did this with our contracts, our labor contracts as well. What occurs more often than not, it is the sheriff of the county who is calling a level three. We have people that live, even if they call a level three, if the sheriff calls a level three, that applies to the city of Athens as well. Mike knows all too well. So, the sheriff calls a level three that, so we cannot place other than essential personnel then in harm as they attempt to travel to get to their place of work. The reason we concluded the mayor in there is there could be an incident just within our boundaries, so he would be able to authorize that. So, that's essentially it.
Questions? Madam President?
I'm going to return just a moment, I think, to 12115 for the staffing levels.
Did I speak to the wrong one?
No, 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 or maybe not. I mean, these are the one-
Staffing ordinance.
The staffing ordinance for the different positions that were identified.
Would you like me to-
A summary of that. I was just going to just briefly review that it does move the TGC position from a half-time to a full-time.
It does, but also moves a landscaper from a half-time to a full-time.
Can I skip 121?
I like that, the landscaper.
And then also replacing a retiring patrol officer, correct? And that's a temporary interim appointment.
Yes, we'll revisit again next late November or December based on how the hiring processes occur. We have a, we have two vacancies still, even though we've offered, we've hired four, or whatever they're called.
You're creating two new positions and upgrading a couple of half, or part-time positions to full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yes, additional solid waste control.
Right.
And interim appointment to assist while someone's on an extended leave of absence. And increasing, there is a little bit of a typo on that, but increasing the reserve officers' pay to be brought up to what an entry-level patrol officer is.
What is that?
Pardon me?
Bubble of B?
It's 23, but we need to reflect that on the auxiliary dare officer as well. I would deem that clerical.
Okay. So, I just thank you for the information. I just thought it was helpful to highlight that, yeah.
Yes, it's been frozen at 20 since at least 2012, like four years.
Thank you. For some information.
We're done.
Okay. And we had finished with, I think we've finished, I'm sorry if I interrupted on that one, but I thought I had a piece of paper in front of me, and we better, wanted to discuss it while we could. Any other comments on 12215 then on the fringe benefits package? Okay. We'll move on to first reading of 12315, an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
I'm on deck a lot tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
You are. It's a lot.
Quickly, effective January 1st, 2016, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized and entered into a one-year contract with United Healthcare, BP to cover the city stop-loss insurance. Sir, the Service Safety Director, would you like to speak?
I believe this amount is set at $110,000 again this year, so we're continuing with that. I think historically, the city may have actually-
I don't have any details on it, so that's what I'm asking.
We might have been at $85,000, and then $100,000, and now we're at $110,000. And the increase in that stop-loss moving up is obviously what the city has faced, increasing that amount so that we can reduce the actual premium that we need to pay each year on that stop-loss.
I believe it was also reported by the HR director about we had a, I forget what they call it, the significant expense clause because of someone's family member having a significant health-related issue. I can't, that was-
Is it catastrophic?
Okay, makes sense.
Okay.
All right. Ordinance 12415 is an ordinance establishing an internal service fund cost allocation policy, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Well, this is a fun one. Thank you, Madam President. It deals with vehicles and computers. Athens City Council does hereby establish an internal service fund cost allocation policy, a copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated therein by reference, and here it is on the back, policy for the city internal service fund cost allocation. And breaks it down by the various departments and so on. Can you talk about how vehicles and computers are cost allocated by departments?
This is in order to offset to pay back into the funds that receive the services. So, internal services includes both mechanics and our computer IT division. Ron Lucas and David Dudding worked closely together to come up with an updated vehicle fleet inventory. It was ranked based on what type of vehicle and what kind of repairs needed, what kind of intensity of it, and there was a percentage assigned across all these departments that you see listed here. Same thing was done with computers. We, of course, aren't assigning the network server back to anyone. It was based on the number of years in each division, and if they had their own-
Printer, copier?
Yeah, the peripherals, and then if they did have a standalone server as well. So, increased some, not, and others not so much. I think the auditor seemed pleased that wasn't too far off what we've been tracking since 2008 in terms of percentages.
So, this is the type of policy that the state auditor likes us to have?
Yes.
Really smiles benevolently, you know, if they see it there.
And so, it's helpful to have this policy since that recommendation came through at the last audit by the state, and we'll be able to implement this with passage before year's end. It's a good thing. Ordinance 12515 is an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
I have a notation here from the administration. Is this, should we suspend?
Yes. Mostly because if you're looking at the Finance Personnel Committee meeting last week, I think it was, there was a concern about some of the TC 100s having enough money to pay the payroll for the end of the year, particularly if you look at it, fire seems, had to be covered, Recreation for the Water Administration in particular. I also said internal service fund as well as TC 100s. So, if you want somebody to have a Christmas paycheck, I guess that's the thing to do.
I move that we suspend the rules on 12515 for the reasons stated by the mayor. I now move to adopt.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Councilmember Reisner, the rules have been suspended.
Great. I move we adopt 12515.
Second.
Nothing needs to be said, it needs to be done.
Okay, so, we have a motion.
Madam, Councilmember Patterson?
On this particular items, I will be recusing myself from voting on this particular piece of legislation, largely because it deals with the mayor's office, the future office, so I just want that known.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 12515. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And abstentions? I have one abstention. All right. So, the motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 12615 is an ordinance authorizing installation of an ADA chairlift in the city building. This is introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. This particular piece of legislation will authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids on a lift that'll be on the first floor of the city building. It will allow an individual, or individuals to have access to the upper level. There is a series of five, six, seven steps as one comes into the city building, but to get back to the administration offices, it is an impasse at this point in time. So, this is a correction for ADA accessibility for the first floor of the city building. The appropriation will come out of the General Fund 101, TC 500, and authorized to expend up to $55,000 on this particular project for the lift, so. Any question?
I would like to point out that this is something that needed to be done a long time ago. I've looked at lifts, and I've never been happy with the mechanisms involved, so therefore I've kind of like held off on it. But again, being both us, the mayor and the mayor-elect are very cognizant of the disabilities and the need to be accessible, in particular, the mayor-elect said we should start on this, and I felt it's important to do that. In the past, if somebody had a disability, I'd meet them in the front conference room. What you find is that more and more, our front conference room is being tied up at any given time, so it's like, I could meet them in the stairwell in the lobby or something like that, but it's probably more appropriate to make it fully accessible as an area. We have the elevator on, you know, that will get you to the second and third floor, but those five steps are just, you know, pretty much, I've had people, you know, literally crawl up to get to the counter, and it's painful to see that, but it happens occasionally, you know, and some people you know, you know? So, thank you for putting a tack under my seat there for that.
You're welcome. It also, you know, brings us in compliance in terms of potential future hires who may work in that environment on the upper level as well, so we're completely, we're moving in the right direction.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I do have one question. I'm just curious if the possibility of a ramp was explored as an option as well?
Multiple times. I would have loved that.
Trouble is that you'd have to have a switchback to get the incline to get to, you know, you look at this between that lobby doors and the counter and stairs, you just couldn't, you know, this one, look how far you have to extend this one just to get the half the distance or a fifth of the distance. That's one step right up to your podium here, I mean, to your, you know, counter there, so.
It was, it was measured to be 48 inches from the lower level to the top of the stairs, and ADA requires a 1 to 12, so it would have been 48 feet, trying to find 48 feet of-
We take over the crosswalk.
That's right.
Which would have created a tripping hazard, so.
We are installing the accessible door to the interior level as well, but we had funds available for that improvement, so.
Which I might add was brought to the attention of a lot of us, including myself, through the Commission on Disabilities. A member of the commission brought that up, stating that it was difficult to get through that second set of doors, so. The Commission on Disabilities.
Okay. We now move on to a resolution for third reading, R 1415. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Athens, Ohio approving the issuance by Public Finance Authority of bonds on behalf of AHA Colonial Village LLC, and this is introduced by all council members.
I'll speak to that. I move that we adopt Resolution 1415.
Second.
We've talked about this numerous times, people who, the AHA Colonial Village have come forward and talked about it. It's something that they do for, to help finance community housing, and they're putting money into some community needed housing for moderate and low-income people in the city of Athens. Would like to say yea for them and pass this resolution.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of R 1415. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. We now have a one reading resolution urging the United States to welcome refugees from Syria and Iraq, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Actually, I would like us to state that it's from all of council at one point. I'll read it before urging to adopt it. A resolution urging the United States to welcome refugees from Syria and Iraq. Whereas we have seen unprecedented rise in refugees from Syria and Iraq fleeing their war-torn homes, and whereas the people seeking refuge are fleeing from bombing, murder, torture, and other horrors, and whereas many countries have welcomed these refugees with open arms, warmth, and compassion, but the discussion in the United States has become divisive and does not represent what America has stood for since our founding, and whereas some government leaders are seeking to limit the opportunity for desperate women, children, and families to seek safety in our nation, not all Americans are in agreement with these actions. And whereas the current process for refugees to resettle in the United States involves numerous interviews and background checks by the Department of State, Defense, and Homeland Security, and can take 18 months to two years to complete, and whereas these refugees need help in finding a safe place to live from fear and hatred. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Athens County, Ohio, that the city of Athens is a community that advocates and embraces the ideal of tolerance, diversity, compassion, and justice, and urges the United States to welcome these refugees fleeing hatred and persecution. The ordinance shall be in full force and effective at the earliest moment permitted by law in passage approval by the mayor. Thank you. I would like to move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 1615. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
We now have announcements and other business. I should check to see, we will be having a special session next week, and do we have, will there be need for any committees to meet?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. We hopefully have all the ordinances. We have a lot that we're working through the system, but I just thought I would ask. And I will, I have about three other announcements of things that are coming up and some reminders. December 19th, council members will be having an orientation, that's on a Saturday morning from 9:00 to noon, will be at the OUN, and will be receiving instruction and information from the auditor and law director and our current mayor and our mayor-elect. So, we're looking forward to that. Looking forward to the new council members joining us.
I have a question on that. It will be a public meeting?
It is, I'm announcing that right now.
Okay.
And so, people are welcome to attend and observe if they want, so, yes. There will be some food for council members so that if people are planning to attend, they should plan to figure out meal, a meal, we conclude with a lunch meal, but they could do that at OUN, I'm sure, easily.
What time?
9:00 to noon.
9:00 to noon.
An announcement that citizens may have received in their last utility bill, I think it was sent out, that there is a water rate increase. We mentioned this earlier this evening, it's a 5.5% increase rate, so I was looking through knowing our bill comes in often at $36 a month, so at a 10% increase, that would be an additional $3.60, so at 5% a dollar eighty, so somewhere, you know, in the, depending on your consumption, a few dollars increase per month on your water bill. And as Service Safety Director Mosley mentioned, what this does is begins to not only cover our costs in this account, but also to build some monies that are needed for some improvements in infrastructure to our water treatment plant. Taking care of the wastewater treatment end, now we need to be taking care of the water treatment end, and I know that Public Works Director Andy Stone has talked about this to council members for several years, of the need for those improvements. Winter breaks approaching, so on another topic, reminders to folks that if you are planning to leave, please make sure that you're not leaving your recycling or your trash bins out, ask a neighbor or a friend, landlord to return the containers if you have to had to set them out just before you leave, and making arrangements to have your sidewalk cleared, because we may have some snow and ice, and it is part of city code that you make sure that within 24 hours of a fall, a snowfall, that it is cleared so that people don't fall. And that's just really important for people to be able to get in, getting around town. And I think, then last but not least for me at least, the city council, rather than meeting next on the Monday, the 21st, so Monday after next, we will have our final session of council on Wednesday, December 16th. That will be at 7:00 PM in the evening, so a slightly different time than we would normally have. Are there any other announcements? Yes, Councilmember Cochran?
Thank you. I would just like to remind folks that the Community Energy Savers program is ongoing through the end of January, so if you have any major- through the end of January, so if you have any major purchases planned, make it Energy Star appliance, and you can earn a point for the city and the county in this competition, which is designed to empower residents and businesses in reducing their energy usage in our community, and we stand to win a cash prize for the Athens Public Libraries to implement energy efficiency upgrades if we are successful in reaching our goal. For more information, folks can go to communityenergysavers.com.
Any other announcements? Okay, a very brief explanation before we have our motion, but we will be, council members will be entering into executive session, and this is for imminent court action that there needs to be discussion of. What we'll do is have that motion to go into executive session, and we will probably end by 8:00. We'll allow five to 10 minutes for folks, the press who's here, who may want to, or citizens who may want to talk to fellow council members. And I am remembering one thing that before we do this motion for executive session, is that we do have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative matters that have not been covered on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to any items tonight? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, so we will, we will now have that motion for executive session, please.
Motion for executive session for all members of council, Lisa Weisner, the law director, the mayor, the attorney director.
Do you leave a note?
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of?
Oh, for the purpose of imminent court action.
And we have a second for that motion, and I will take a voice vote, so Councilmember Butler, Councilmember Reisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fall. Councilmember Patterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cochran.
Aye.
And Councilmember Canterbury.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we will go into executive session, and when we have finished with that, we will open the doors back up and then have a motion to adjourn, so if people for some reason want to stay and come back after our executive session. So we'll reconvene in an executive session by 8:10.